Good evening and welcome to the September 23 meeting of the Concord Select Board. I'll remind everybody that our meeting is being both broadcast and recorded. The first order of business this evening is our consent agenda on which there are town accountants warrants, minutes from June 17th to July 1st and July 15th. We have two proclamations that we have signed, one for Luke Paltler, who has become an Eagle Scout, and we congratulate Luke and all look forward to signing a letter on behalf of the Select Board to Luke. The 100th anniversary of the Concord Players, Concord Players Day, October 20th, 2019, congratulations to them, and the Concord Carlisle Community Chest Month, which is October of this year, 2019. So, we have proclamations for all three of those. Gift acceptance from the Algren Family Charitable Fund of $500 for property tax relief. Thank you very much. One day special licenses, Salt Box Farm, October 5th from 11:00 to 4:00 at West 40 Westford Road, wine and malt only. Provisors, October 7th from 12:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Concord Country Club, wine and malt only. Salt Box Farm on October 11th and 25th from 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. at 40 Westford Road, wine and malt only. The Umbrella, October 25th from 6:30 to 11:00 at 40 Stowe Street, and Salt Box Farm on November 16th, 6:30 to 9:30 at 40 Westford Road, wine and malt only. To entertain a motion to approve the consent, Cal.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I'd already disclosed that I've been caught off guard by allergy season, so I forgive my low voice. So you have the report in front of you. I did include a brief teaser report from Planning and Land Management about the Nuclear Metals StarMet property and the work of the Reuse Committee. That's, looks like they're off to a really great start. It's kind of a long-duration effort and planning effort as the site is remediated to residential standards, and I think we're several years away from that. But as you can see from the report, they've already got a pretty good focus on what that universe could look like, and I think it could be, in the future, a great opportunity for the town. Just an update on Triple E, we did do some backpack ground spraying of the playing, of certain playing fields and around the schools, I think last Thursday, and then again, and then some were done on Thursday, some were done on Sunday. Right now, we are kind of in a wait-and-see approach to see, we're still at moderate risk level, and we'll, hopefully, we will stay that way, and we won't get any other feedback from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, but we're still monitoring it very closely, and if we need to take further action, we will certainly do that. Budget and capital instructions have gone out to the department heads, I included them, just to instruct the front-end memos for the Board's edification. If you have any question about those, feel free to let me know. Also, we're kicking off Climate Action Plan Week here, and one of the big features of that is our Municipal Vulnerability, or MVP, Grant Program, which is, talks about, you know, resilience in the time of climate change, where we've seen storms become more severe and traditional weather patterns kind of get out of tradition. So, that's going to be a great opportunity, we'll get a lot of input from both town employees, but also the community as well as part of that process. And then, the library expansion project has received its approvals from local permitting. As you see, I detail in the memo that that included the historic district commission, a recommendation from the Planning Board to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and then approval by the ZBA, which was last week. There is an appeal period that we're currently in, it's 20 days from the day of the ZBA decision, so we're not sure if we will receive an appeal or not, but that could affect the timeline if we did. And that's pretty much, oh, and then Thursday, I don't know if you were going to announce it, but the ribbon cutting for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is on Thursday at 2:00?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Do we have something on the 26th?
It's a Friday.
Do we? For me?
Reception sometime?
Oh, yes, Thursday, yes.
Yeah, the ribbon cutting is on Friday.
Oh, sorry, the ribbon cutting is on Friday.
At 2:00, yeah.
Right.
At 2:00. On Thursday is, there'll be, there'll be a welcome reception for the Town Manager here in the hearing room. That is BYOB, in case anybody. So, yeah, that is on Thursday at 5:00 p.m.
Well, that was going to be my chair's remarks.
Oh, sorry.
Any questions for the Town Manager? I want to just say that I was at school committee meeting, I should probably wait till the liaison, but the 2229 follow-on committee made a presentation to them. I know there's going to be a public hearing where they're going to try to gather additional input from the public about it, and once they've completed that, I want to ask them to come here and talk to us. You know, we had formed this committee to start advising us, you know, there's not pressure, but people are interested in whether or not the town is going to actually take over ownership of that property, and I think the concern, the town expressed was outstanding liability of the property, and then not exactly knowing what we wanted to do, but from an EPA point of view, like, they made it clear that it would be helpful to them and should be helpful to the town to begin expressing what we might do with that property. That, hence, that's why we started that committee. So I think once they've had their public hearing, we'll want to get them to come here and be able to talk to us.
Right.
And I was going to announce, but Steve already did, reception for Town Manager here in the townhouse on the 26th. And then, Susan, we had a very successful event called Porch Fest on Saturday in West Concord, would you like to give us a 30-second summary of that event?
I would love to. It was, I thought it was a tremendous success for a first-year event, there were hundreds of people there, didn't feel crowded, but it didn't, you never know for a first year. It wasn't empty, there were nine houses, or eight houses in Harvey Wheeler Center that had bands, music scheduled from 1:00 to 5:00, and it was two or three different musical acts, so that means they organized, you know, 25 or so acts, it was as wide a range of music as you can imagine, and it, there were just groups of people, at each place, there were 20 to 30 people listening, and there were people, neighbors, all hanging out, talking to each other, there were obviously visitors, I overheard a woman telling her friend that she was told to park at X, so she was clearly not from Concord, and it was just people talking to people, it was wonderful. The weather was great, the, at Harvey Wheeler, they had one of the music stages, WIQH was there, Reasons to be Cheerful, I got lemonade from a Girl Scout on one of the corner, it was great, like a block party, only, I think it's, I think it's the beginning of another Concord tradition, I hope.
That's great. Thank you very much. All right, it is, next item on our agenda is a 705 public hearing, change of manager associated with Section 12 Club alcohol license at Paparazzi, Lot 768 Elm Street. Is there anybody here from?
No show.
So we'll move on. Karen, you're up next, Director of Finance, presentation on acceptance of federal grant money policy. Good evening.
Good evening. Hopefully, this will be a quick item. Each year, as a part of our audit, we have a management letter that is issued, and in the management letter, there are items either that are required for us to perform before the next, before the next audit, or they're suggestions. In this case, we had a requirement that we put together a set of policies and procedures to deal with the acceptance and management of federal grants. For the most part, the grants that the town receives from the federal government are on the school side, but there are occasions that we may receive grant from, a grant from FEMA in the event of, you know, severe weather or that type of thing. So the school has put together a set of policies and procedures that looks very much like ours, we've just substituted words to, you know, to substitute town for school, but it's a requirement that both, both sides, both the town and the school, have a set of policies. And these policies deal with cash management, they deal with procurement, determining allowable costs, if there's any travel involved, there is guidance within the policies for that, as well as subrecipient monitoring. So in the event that we received some funds that we, in turn, granted to another entity, there are some requirements that we must follow as well. So there is a policy, a set of policies and procedures that are before you this evening, and I'm hoping that you will, at either tonight or at some point in the near future, approve those so that we can check that box off of our management letter.
Bring it back to us for approval, do we have to approve it?
It is, it's up for approval for the Board of Select, for the Select Board.
Okay, well, it was included in our packet, is it ready to be?
It is, it is ready whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready. Can I ask a question? It looks like a really well-thought-out policy, and how much do we typically get from federal grants in a year, or say, this year?
So, on the town side, we don't typically, we don't typically qualify for a single audit if it was just for the town. On the school side, around, I believe it's around $1 million, we're not too much over the threshold, but, but we do each year with the combination of the two qualify or meet that.
So we go over the $750,000 routinely?
We do, but not by much.
Okay.
Yeah.
And again, at the school.
Yes.
Rare event.
Like, what kind of grants do they get at the school, though?
For school lunch.
Okay.
For special education.
Okay, great.
Did you want to approve?
If there are any other questions, if you could.
I move that we approve the Concord federal grant policies and procedures as presented in our packets.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and we were able to sign the material.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen. Next item on our agenda is a conservation restriction from the Concord Conservation Land Trust. I'm going to recuse myself, my wife is a Director of the Concord Open Land Foundation, and we, our property almost abuts this property. So I'll turn it over to Linda, welcome.
Welcome, yeah, good evening.
Hello. I'm Joan Ferguson, the Chair of the Concord Land Conservation Trust, and with me tonight is Jay Kyz, who's on the Board of the Land Trust, and I think you all know Delia Kay, the Director of the Division of Natural Resources. We're here tonight to ask you to accept a conservation restriction on a property called Hartwell Meadow, little over five acres at the west side of Lowell Road with the border with Carlisle. I don't know if you can see this, it's in sort of this orange color there. We acquired this property in 2017 by exercising the right of first refusal. I don't know how familiar you are with the Chapter 61A program.
Do you want us to pass this around, would it be helpful, please?
Or you could just?
Sure.
You could, you could show it to the audience, maybe. But landowners or farmers in town who keep their land in farming get a property tax deduction under Chapter 61A, but a condition of that is if they change the use or sell the land, so it isn't in farming anymore, the town has the right of first refusal. And that's what happened with this property, the owners decided to sell it for a single-family house lot, they got a bona fide offer on a purchase and sale, and this triggered the right of first refusal. So the Select Board chose not to exercise their right, and the Land Trust asked that that right be assigned to us, which was done, and so we purchased the property. But another condition of Chapter 61A is that we need to put a conservation restriction on the property to ensure that it stays in agricultural and open space uses in perpetuity. So that's why we're here tonight, we worked with, as we usually do, worked with Delia to develop the conservation restriction, it was reviewed by the state, we signed it, the Natural Resources Commission voted to accept it last week. But I think you can see by reading the restriction in the purposes section and by looking at the map why the Land Trust was interested in preserving this property as farmland, as a connection of open space between Carlisle and the Spencer Brook Valley, it's historical, it's, you know, it's a very beautiful entrance to Concord. Anything?
It's funny, it's conservation land we have in Concord, and it's also conservation land in Carlisle, and it ties them together, it's a big, beautiful parcel when you consider the whole thing.
And Joan, I don't know if you just mentioned it, or if we read it, obviously, this has been something you've been working on for a number of years in terms of getting these adjacent parcels together.
Oh, yes, yes, in the Spencer Brook Valley for decades, trying to put the various pieces together, yes.
Right. Are there any other questions?
So Joan, in 2017, the Select Board did not exercise the right of first refusal, what's different, what's changed between then and now?
Oh, well, nothing, the Select Board didn't choose to buy it, and we asked them, this is also a provision of Chapter 61A, that they can assign that right of first refusal to another organization.
Okay.
And we were that other organization, so we asked that it be assigned to us, and then we had to meet, we had to match the purchase and sale price to buy the land, and it's subject to a whole set of timelines to get that done, to, you know, to protect the seller.
Right.
Yeah.
I think if you look at the historical relationship between the town itself and the Land Trust, we've done so many things together.
Yes, absolutely.
It wasn't like we came out of the blue and said, "To this."
So, nothing's changed between 2017 and now, it's just?
No, no, we just, it's, there was no deadline, so, you know, we just took our time and the state took its time, and here we are.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so, you're looking for a motion of approval from us, correct? Yes, so do I hear a motion to approve?
I move that we approve a conservation restriction pursuant to Mass. General Law, Section 31 through 33 of Chapter 184, at 1767 Lowell Road, granted by the Concord Land Conservation Trust on September 9, 2019, and accepted by the Natural Resources Commission on September 18, 2019. The CR is shown as Lot A and Parcel B, and consisting collectively of approximately 5.36 acres, as shown on the following plan. Hayes Farm, Concord, Mass., Lot Layout Plan for Hayes Farm Partnership dated May 24, 1989, prepared by Stamsky and McNary, Inc., recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds as Plan Number 630 of 1992.
Thank you, do a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for all the work that goes into putting this together over a long period of time, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay is right, it's a beautiful piece of property. Next item on our agenda, David Carr, Chair of the Tax Fairness Committee, talked to us about the Senior Means Tested Tax Property Act Exemption Update, and we're also joined by the Town Assessor, have him join us, you never know.
Okay.
Good evening, David.
No, thank you, and I thank the Select Board for all your support for the Tax Fairness Committee in the past, and?
For the record, introduce yourself, though.
Yes, I'm sorry, my name is David Carr, address, yes, 82 Laws Brook Road, and I'm the Chair of the Tax Fairness Committee.
Terrific.
Yes, so, again, thanks, our thanks to the Select Board for your support and for having us here tonight. If I, I'm, I think you are more familiar with this, but if I might review, just summarize what we're talking about?
Of course.
For everyone's benefit.
Do it.
Good, so the Senior Means Tested Exemption, which is a program we put in place essentially last year, this is a, this is a property tax exemption that people can qualify for by age, length of residence, property value, and other assets, and I think there's a couple of their small qualifications in there, and this, this exemption can reduce their tax bill by up to 50% of the total tax bill, so it's a much more significant exemption than the other exemptions that are available to us in the past. In fiscal year 2019, which started last year, first year of implementation, 49 applications were granted, a total of $191,000 of taxes were exempted among the 49 applicants, in amounts ranging from about $1,700 to $5,800, and, and this altogether represented 0.23% of the residential levy, at least according to my calculations, which is well below the limit we set of 1/2%. So, the reason I'm here tonight, why we need to take further action, is that this, the home rule that we have, that we are doing this under expires three years after implementation, which means we, we've done fiscal year 19, we can do fiscal year 20 and 21, and after that, it's over. So we need to put something in place for fiscal year 22. And the timeline for this, this fall, we would be putting a new home rule petition on the town warrant, assuming that this is okay. Spring of 2020, this would be voted at town meeting and sent off to the legislature, they then take their, whatever time it takes them to decide on it, hopefully not too many months, and, and we get back the decision. In spring of 2021, we'd have a chance to vote it again at town meeting and at the polls, we can actually accept it, that's part of the process, and that would mean that in the summer of 2021, we would be just in time to take applications for fiscal year 2022. So that's, it's, it's, there's not a lot of slack in that timeline.
It's already been approved by the town meeting several years ago, so the law just simply requires after three years, we do it again.
Yeah.
And suddenly, put the same application in, and the reaction they got from the general court was, "Oh, for heaven's sakes, just make it permanent, we don't know what's going to happen."
Okay, so, to summarize, we, so I, so you have, I think, received the text of the proposed home rule that we would like to put on the ballot, on the warrant, the, essentially, well, it continues the program, we have removed the three-year expiration from, from this warrant article, so, as Jay said, let's not have to do this every three years. And we also fixed, we believe we fixed some problems that were identified by the Assessor's Office during the implementation last year, during and before, there were some, in particular, the, the income calculation that we were, that the home rule required before depended on the circuit breaker, the state, the state's circuit breaker, which is another program for, for property tax relief, but it's, but they have a very complicated worksheet for figuring out the, for figuring out the income of the applicant, and the Assessor's Office was forced to actually fill this out for some applicants, and this is, they're very concerned about that being an administrative burden, so, we said, instead, we'll, they, there's a perfectly good alternative, which is simply gross income, which they've used for a lot of gross income, which is, which is what it sounds like, and it's essentially what the circuit breaker worksheet was trying to calculate, only in a much more complicated way. So, we're very happy to use that instead, and that simplifies things.
Cheaper, cheaper, right?
Yes, well, for one thing, for one thing, it should avoid the possibility that we might have to hire any extra staff to figure this out, that's, that's a great benefit. And also, we wanted to clarify a couple of items, such as the fact that we do think that if the applicant has another exemption they're eligible for, for example, I think it's clause 23 is a military exemption, 22, I'm sorry, 22, if, that they should, you know, receive the full benefit of that, as well as the full benefit of this exemption, and that would possibly bring them below 50% of their total tax bill, you know, we might bring them down 50%, and then an order of 800 below that, and we wanted to make it clear to the Board of, to the Board of Assessors that this is, in fact, the intention that we wanted to do. And I think that's, that is essentially what we're, what we're recommending and requesting.
So you're doing a, you've done a good job of trying to summarize this for us, but if I could just ask for a little bit more clarification on the, whether or not the applicants will in essence be penalized if they do, in fact, qualify for the circuit breaker?
Okay, so, there's, there's no, I believe there's no case in which an applicant will be penalized?
When I say penalized, they get less help with their taxes because they're getting that amount.
Right, there will be, there are, there will be a few cases in which, in which the applicant, instead of getting the thousand, I think it's $1,080 it was last time from the, from the state, they'll just be getting it from us upfront, they'll be getting direct tax relief instead of having to apply for it later. A number of applicants, because we, but because, because under this home rule, we're only able to reduce their taxes 50% of, about, well, 50%, maybe, we're only able to take 50% off of their, off of their tax by this thing, a very great number of them are still paying more than 10% of their income.
Correct.
And, and they, they can, they can still get the circuit breaker. I worked out the figures, and there was, there was, there were some cases in which people paid, ended up having a lower tax bill than they did under the old home rule, I didn't find any cases in which anyone paid more in taxes, you know, including what they got back from the circuit breaker than under the old home rule.
Obviously, my question is coming from a position of, the work that you're doing is aimed at trying to help a specific group of people, and so I just wanted to see how that was playing out. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I, I want to say, I'm the liaison to this committee, and they spent countless hours trying to work on these very fine-grained issues, with a lot of cooperation from Layne, so thank you, and I, this meets your major concerns in terms of?
Yeah, the, since we had to put it back in for approval anyways, we did, I brought some issues to the committee that made it hard for us to administer, which have been addressed in the rewrite, and then it's not major changes to this, the program is essentially the same, the only difference really is we're using gross income instead of circuit breaker income as the qualifier.
Okay.
That's, that's the biggest change, otherwise, it's pretty much the same, if anything slightly more favorable to the taxpayer in some cases. We, both David and I ran the numbers, and nobody loses, or nobody doesn't get it because of these changes by any means.
That's a helpful explanation, thank you very much.
Some get more, some get more because they were bumping up against the 50% tax bill max, which now will get slightly more, and then there was also, came out through some of this was an interpretation of what we already had passed, that we need to change slightly, and that'll make some people come down in their attention just a little, so I doubt that the taxpayers that are in the program will feel any difference.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
And what I think I will do is send, I contacted Senator Barrett's office, as I told you, the hope was that perhaps we could just get an amendment and not have to go through the whole process again, but no such luck, they said no. But what I will do is send your new proposed law to Senator Barrett's office and ask him to get it to their council, so if there are any issues, we hear about it with the time that we can flirt around with it before it gets to town meeting, so I'll send that off on your behalf, and thank you. Jay Kyz, who was a member? Jay Kaiser was a member of the committee as well as you're with us tonight. So thank you all.
Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for all the work you did to get this straightened away. I suspect which what are we what's.
Let's see if it's five is we can start at five, whatever you want, or we can pull that down.
Okay, well, let's I assume you're here from paparazzi. Is that correct? Why don't you come up here?
Just to clarify again that conversation as we prepare the warrant, want to include that language in the draft warrant as we ever did.
We do, but we want to get the legal opinion from the state in case there's some little word change or something. You might remember that we have some latitude in what we send them, but when once they get it, they're the ones who propose the bill. And when when they propose the bill and it comes back to town meeting, we have no ability to amend it. So we want to try to get it as close to language that they know they'll buy before the facts. So we don't have to scurry around to try to to try to do that kind of stuff. So we'll move back to the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
So for the record, if you we could just read, this is a public hearing for a change of manager associated with existing section 12 restaurant, all alcohol license, Paparazzi of Concord at 768 Elm Street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So we know why you're here. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
My name is Julian Maria. I am currently the general manager of Paparazzi on Newbury Street in Boston. The restaurant in Boston will be closing at the end of October, and I have been I am being transferred to the restaurant in Concord where I started my career with Paparazzi.
Really? How long ago was that?
2013 or 14 April, I knew it was April.
Oh, that's great. And so you've been with Paparazzi for how long?
Five, five years at least.
Those five years. And before that, were you in the business?
Yes, I was at the Boston Harbor Hotel working for a company called Rudy's. And after that, I worked for a company called Was Still Rudy's that became Resto Concepts. And I was my whole career has been between that restaurant and Paparazzi, my whole working life. So it was 19.
Before we entertain questions, I'll ask, this application is complete and in order?
Yes.
You're correct. Do you have questions from the board?
I just have one question. Has the operation of the Paparazzi Group changed since its acquisition or you joining the Newport Restaurant Group?
Newport Restaurant Group, formerly known as Newport Harbor Corporation, now it's called Newport Restaurant Group. Paparazzi was owned by Back Bay Restaurant Group. And the the operation has remained the same throughout the ownership of Back Bay Restaurant Group and and Newport Restaurant Group.
Thank you.
A pleasure.
Other questions? And you are aware of the fact that you must be on the premise for a minimum of 30 hours while alcohol is being served, and that's.
Yeah, I intend to be there between 40 to 60 hours.
Yeah. Few managers get away with 30 hours. I don't know why they are. Any other questions from the?
And we do we do have a second, an alternate manager on record already on fire.
Okay, good.
Right. Any questions from the audience? Seeing no hands, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any additional comments or questions from the board?
Yeah.
All right, I would entertain a motion then.
I move to approve the application from the from the application that was provided from Paparazzi Trattoria of Concord, Inc., located at 768 Elm Street for the change of manager associated with existing section 12 restaurant, all alcohol license. The new manager Julian Maria must be engaged in the actual management of the licensed premises as their main occupation and must be present on the licensed premises for not less than 30 hours per week during the hours when alcoholic beverages are sold. Approval is contingent upon the ABCC approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Welcome back to Concord.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Don't like the drive, but I love it. Thank you.
The next order of business is an update on Minuteman Tech. Steve.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Steve Ledoux, the new Concord representative to the Minuteman Tech School Committee. It's a very exciting time for Minuteman Tech right now. As you all know, we opened up the new school a couple of weeks ago, one year ahead of schedule and under budget, which is not something you commonly hear with public construction projects. So everybody's real happy about that. And I wanted to remind everybody of a week from Friday, October 4th, the ribbon cutting, 9:30 a.m. And there's also an open house that's going to be scheduled November 17th. I think it's 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. That's that's a Sunday. I don't believe there's going to be a tour associated with the ribbon cutting because it's some ways it's still an active construction site. The Performing Arts Center is still under construction. The early childhood learning area is still under construction, so may not be able to do that. But it's in a very impressive school. We we, as a school committee, took a tour last Tuesday, one hour before our school committee meeting, and we didn't get to see the whole school in an hour. So there's still a lot to be a lot to be seen. But that's not necessarily why I'm here tonight. Some of you may know or may remember that maybe about five years ago, the regional school agreement was redone primarily because of some disgruntled member communities. There used to be 16 communities in the Minuteman District. And the regional agreement was redone, six communities pulled out of Minuteman, leaving 10. And then in October of 2016, Belmont voted to withdraw from Minuteman Tech effective June 30, 2020. Since then, the the school superintendent in Belmont has put together a study committee looking at alternatives for vocational ed for their for their their kids. And they basically came to the conclusion that Minuteman Tech is their best option. So the problem is they voted to rescind. And so there's kind of a two-phase process for them to rescind rescind the vote. First is they need a town meeting vote rescinding their action. They have a town meeting scheduled November 18th. None of the none of the the main boards have taken positions yet because it's obviously still September. So we don't know necessarily what their position is. But assuming Belmont votes to rescind their action, under the new regional agreement, it's a unanimous vote of the Minuteman School Committee to allow them to come back in. So the other nine communities will will have a vote. And and one of the other provisions of the of the regional agreement is, once they voted to withdraw from the district, they were no longer responsible for any future capital costs. So since October of 2016, they have not been paying any capital costs towards the bond payments for for the new school. So if if they if they vote to rescind their their decision, if our school committee unanimously votes to allow them back in, they have to, in essence, pay back the district $472,000, which through the formula of the regional school agreement computes to about $34,000 for the town of Concord, which would be basically come off next year's assessment. And one of the reasons I'm here tonight is to kind of not only bring you up to date, but but get some guidance, because one of the things Belmont has has asked, one of the their selectmen have asked, that would the school committee entertain paying back that $472,000 over three years versus a one one-year lump sum? So, you know, roughly for Concord, $11,000 and some change for for three years versus versus the 34,000. You know, I don't think it's, you know, it's obviously not a big amount of money in the scope of of municipal finance. But I think the important thing to think about is the the major capital bonding cost of that school spread over 10 communities versus nine communities, which if, in fact, they pull out all the remaining nine of us, will have to have to absorb. So I'm really here just to get any of your thoughts. You know, ultimately, it is a school committee decision, but I just wanted to know how the board felt. Also be talking to the FinCom next week about this as well.
And it doesn't require action by either the select board or town meeting to let anybody into this district agreement?
No.
It's just the school committee?
Yes, the school committee, correct.
Well, I read your memo, and it's very clearly presented. And I think that I wouldn't have strong feelings about either payment method.
Yeah. I mean, part of my my opinion is, you know, we're going to or actually, the school committee is going to take a straw vote on October 22nd, because we don't even really know if we have a unanimous vote to allow them back in. I mean, there's some hard feelings going back way before my time. Hopefully, people will think about the kids and not the not the politics. But, you know, I guess my way of thinking is, I think it's important for them to stay in for both for the kids and for the financing. So I I think we we need to compromise or work out whatever we can work out. Maybe it's a two-year rate payment, you know, but I I think we should be open to it.
Are there I remember at the time when we were redoing the agreement and towns were leaving and we were trying to figure out the financing for the school and all that, the superintendent was fairly confident that once a school was built or close to built, that it would be very attractive and might, in fact, cause other communities to want to join the district, not necessarily those that had left coming back.
Right.
Was, as I recall, Waltham? I can't remember.
Waltham and Watertown were being Waltham and Watertown were being.
Any progress on?
You know, I've already been to one school committee meeting. I've not I've not heard that report yet. But the the ninth grade class is a waiting list right now. So so I think that's a lot of the tribute to the new school.
Home rule is just.
Yeah. And the school, I mean, some I was just blown away by the robotics program that's there, and it just it's unbelievable. It's not your not your mom and dad's vocational school anymore. It's just amazing.
So I too don't have a point of view about it. I wonder, Mr. Town Manager, or we have our finance director here, if the town has any input to a potential finance plan. It's either 11,000 over three years or 34 upfront against an annual assessment of a half a million or so, something like that, right?
I don't want to speak for the finance director, but I think in the grand scheme of things, it probably doesn't make much of a difference to us whether they get the 34,000 all at once or it's spread over three years. I think in keeping with Steve's memo, I think the important thing is if the school committee does agree that it is a benefit to have Belmont in it, my recommendation would be to support that position by making it as easy as possible for them to reintegrate.
Well, there's a payback. That's the 34,000.
That's the 34,000. And going forward, our 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 capital cost should be going down because.
Has anybody done the calculation?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, like I said, we're going in front of FinCom next week, and the new finance director of the district's coming with me, so I'll make sure he's done that calculation.
Thanks. Thanks very much for the update, and we'll look forward to further updates. And.
Yeah, I hope I see some of you guys on next Friday.
I'll be there at the at the opening. That'll be very exciting.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. All right.
I just have one. Did you say November 17th was the open house?
If that's a Sunday, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, as you might remember, a couple of meetings ago, we had a very detailed comprehensive presentation by TBA, an architectural consulting firm. And so this is sort of an update from the town manager.
Thank you. Just make a note here, sorry. So as you noted, I did that evening when TBA got done doing their very detailed report, we were wondering, you know, what next? So I offered that if the board gave me and the other department heads a little bit of time, we could go through the TBA report, kind of lay on the table what's out there, and then report back to the board with what we believe with the SMT, the senior management team believes are our priorities. That led to a dedicated meeting, SMT meeting, to discuss just this topic. And I have a summary of that discussion in your packet. I did not include the TBA report information for backup in addition to avoiding deforestation. It was we don't have the final report from TBA. Obviously, we'll distribute that electronically once we have it, but I think you have enough information to basically have a clear idea of what the deficiencies are in the town buildings. So again, we had a very detailed conversation. I think it was an excellent exercise with SMT. And at the end, and the other thing we wanted to do is we wanted to be mindful of not setting priorities in a vacuum, meaning if this is a priority and this happens, not paying attention to what could possibly happen after that, but at the same time, not projecting or speculating things that may not happen at all and create a sense of, you know, decision-making that doesn't really exist. So we were trying to balance out, you know, scenario building with not being too prescriptive and, like I said, speculating too wildly. So one of the things that was not in the TBA report, but that that is our is the number one, the consensus number one priority, is the construction of the new middle school. I know that wasn't really, like I said, TBA didn't present on that. They did it was a town facility study. And I mean, I think from certainly from a bonding standpoint, a school project is a town project. And from a shared service standpoint, a town project is also a school project. And so at the SMT level, we did discuss that. And the the middle school, I think, the needs of the middle schools have been reported on by others in great detail. But there is a committee that has been appointed to oversee that effort. They have an OPM on hand. They're they're going to advertise, I think, tomorrow for a designer, and they are really they have a timeline to present this back to the town at town meeting. So while we could we could debate whether or not it is the greatest physical need, it is certainly the one that is furthest ahead of any of the other projects that TBA presented. So and I think from a department head standpoint, we all kind of agreed that it is a priority, and the community certainly thinks it's a priority. And so it as servants of the community, what we decided it was best to just to recognize that fact. And I do think it's a bona fide need for the community as well. So just a little bit of brief information about that project. Again, I didn't want to overload the board with with details on each individual project, so this was kind of a quick hitter, and we can go into details at a later date. The second priority is the construction of a new public safety building in a new location. The site at Walden on Walden Street just simply isn't big enough to accommodate a modern public safety facility. A question that may come up is, what about splitting them and doing a police station and a fire station? And one of the things that I think is a great strength of the town of Concord, Big T Town of Concord organization, is the collaboration between the police and fire. Not every community has it that way, and they very much enjoy being in the same space and see the benefits of sharing information, resources, you know, being around each other day in, day out. And I can tell you from personal experience, that does make those operations, which are so essential to our community, work even better. You know, the sum being the the whole being greater than the sum of the parts, which is important, which is exactly what you want in public safety. That was kind of, you know, in terms of talking about the public safety building, there are variables that are not related to building conditions that are that really drive the decision-making, specifically response times and run times. So there would likely still be a satellite firehouse, no matter where you build this public safety complex. And so we're going to look so as you look at potential sites, the ideal will be where could this be located, where response times can still be maintained, which is why I say further down. The Walden Street facility would would be contemplated to remain as a public safety facility as potentially, like, for example, if we found a site in West Concord, you could put a public safety complex there and then maintain Walden Street as the the field, the satellite station, basically reversing the roles. So those are the types of things we considered. I I think the big thing is the bays are inadequate. The there are spaces, I mean, they really are, you know, perpetually taking storage spaces and turning them into administrative or training or other kinds of spaces. And that means that they have very little storage, which they have a need for. There is equipment that only gets used periodically that they need to have access to. So that, like I said, that was agreed agreed by all, that that was really the number two. number two priority, um, for our community. And, um, like I said, it, it'll be a complicated sighting process, but one that'll be very important. So then we talked about, we.
Steve, do we know, do we know, I know we don't know cost or anything like that, but we, do we know approximate footprint size? I mean, how large of a piece of land would we need in order to be able to pull this off?
I, I think some of that would, is in the TBA report.
Um, and various scenarios.
And I'm sure as we get further along in this, in this effort, um, and I don't know if, if we would put together a, a pointed committee to kind of study the sighting of a public safety facility, we certainly could. Um, we could probably get more into those details then. Uh, they'd certainly need one that's, um, much bigger than the one they have, but twice as big, I, I don't know. Um, I think you can gain a lot of efficiencies through smart design, but like I said, the biggest thing is the bays, the storage of apparatus and vehicles uh, and parking and things like that are, are kind of essential components to that. So then, um, under the heading of you eat an elephant one bite at a time, we delved into CPW, which obviously is a very, very large facility. And if, if the recommendation was, or the decision was made to build a whole new one someplace new, it would be easily fifty million dollars, uh, going away. Um, Rich Rain, and I give Rich a lot of credit for this, uh, made actually a compelling argument that, that doesn't need to happen. That they can exist where they are. There, there are benefits to being on Kai's Road, close to center of town, again, for response times and deployment during snow operations and other, you know, public works, uh, situations. So, uh, the one thing he identified as, as a, an immediate need, um, is a new salt shed. And I've seen the salt shed and I can attest that it is in fact an immediate need. Uh, the good news is they're not all that expensive to build in the grand scheme of things. And so, um, priority number three is, is the salt shed as a standalone, um, project, um, for the CPW. And then priority number four would be, uh, major phased renovations of the public works departments. Um, they are also very tight on administrative spaces and storage spaces. Uh, their vehicle bays, um, aren't adequate to protect the fleet. And I'm sure, as you know, it's, the life cycle on a vehicle that is stored inside versus a vehicle that is stored outside is, um, very different. It's a much shorter life cycle for a vehicle stored outside and most vehicles at CPW are stored outside. You've got, um, there's, they're, they're still, they're still fuel diesel. You have, in the winter time, you have a lot of idling and things like that that would maybe be, that would be greatly reduced if we had adequate indoor vehicle storage. So, um, those, that's, so three and four are CPW, salt shed is a standalone, and then a phased, uh, a phased approach towards the rest of the facility. Um, and then five is also CPW, uh, well, it's three, four, and five. Four is the administrative spaces and then five is the, uh, fleet, uh, facilities, like I said, like I just mentioned. And then, um, six, we put down as, uh, if number two happens and we do a, a new public safety facility at a different location, the renovation of the Walden Street existing public safety facility would be the sixth priority. Uh, and the reason why that, um, is that high on that list is because a lot of other issues that were identified by TBA could be, um, s- uh, ameliorated greatly if we had that renovated Walden Street space with less occupancy by police and fire. For an example that was thrown out was the facilities department could then have a bay or two to store their vans and things like that and they would have administrative spaces. So, a lot of pressure on some of our current space, some of our current spaces would be, um, relieved, uh, if we had, like I said, the bulk of that Walden Street facility once fire and police had moved to a new location. Um, and then the memo goes on the detail, uh, some of the advantages of the new facility for police and fire. And then, uh, just a little, like, just a little more detail on the recommendations. So, um, and then in terms of, uh, it wasn't a priority list, um, for townhouse here, but there was a, a prior appropriation to, um, do what we've termed space mining here. Uh, and I think that we could probably find, with, with some reassignment of room use and maybe some minor reconfiguration, we probably could, uh, find some spaces and make the townhouse, um, administrative spaces work a little better. But some of that would be predicated on taking certain functions and, and moving them over to a renovated Walden Street facility. So, um, the final thing is, we did, uh, in our SMT meeting, talk about debt service. Finance Director Kerry LaFleur did show us the, the debt service projections that also contemplate, uh, a new middle school as well as certain other projects. So we wanted to be mindful of, um, potential debt service impacts of the projects. And, um, there is, uh, some relief in sight, uh, in FY twenty-five, the first elementary school project will be paid off. And by the end of FY twenty-nine, all the other existing school debt, um, not including a new middle school.
Or the high school.
Or the, yeah, or the high school will, will be paid off. So there will be some room in our, in our current debt service payments to accommodate, um, some of these projects. So we want, like I said, we wanted to be, we didn't want to treat it like money is no object. We want to be mindful of not only prioritizing based on, on department need, but also projecting the projects based on, um, cost impact or debt service impact specifically.
I'd, uh, I think it would be a, a useful thing for both this committee and I suspect the finance committee would, find it useful as well, is if we could put together some kind of graphic that would sort of look at what our debt service obligations are, current debt service obligations, and what their path looks like. Their peak and then their tail, as you said, in fiscal twenty-five and twenty-nine. And then if we laid on that, assuming the middle school gets done, what that does to it. And then if these other priorities came along, you know, you'd be speculating on when, of course, and costs. But it would be, I think, an interesting exercise just to get all of this laid out and start looking at what happens if this is a year later or this is a year earlier. For example, um, you've articulated the number one priority for, after the school as a public safety facility. But my understanding of that is that the current physical location of the ones that we have can't do the job. So we have to find some spot. So who knows when that's gonna happen? Public service that you talked about sounds like it was Plan B of TBA. I don't remember exactly, but there was a major renovation of one of their three. So while that's a lower priority, that could start now. And so you've got this, who knows when the land's gonna become available somewhere and then, you know, it'd be, it'd be interesting to see how these interplay and what kind of movement we could have. That could be fun, I mean, not fun, but, I don't, sorry, that's the economist in me talking. It'd be fun to, uh, see if we could put together, I'd be volunteering to help since I came up, but.
Yeah, I, I think some of that information exists currently. Like I said, we did look at some charts that, that.
Oh, I'm sure there's charts, but there are some software tools, I, I apologize. There's some software tools that can make these things interactive that make them variable. You punch in a number and, so.
So you essentially end up with three or four overlays and you can lift up the overlays more or less, uh, so that you're looking at how these.
So, also, we, we may have people for that.
I think.
No, I, I think, um, I, I, so I think, I, I mean, the biggest thing is we'd want, I, I would, I want some guidance from the board in terms of your view of this prioritization and stuff, and make it a little bit easier because we could be a little more, um, purposeful in our projections. And so, uh, and, and if the answer is the priorities depend on the debt service impacts, then we can just go with that. Um, but if there's, you know, um, some level of agreement, and you don't have to answer, obviously you don't have to answer me now, if there's some level of agreement with the list of priorities, we can say, okay, here's what this is gonna do. And if we change priority two with priority one, or, you know, we can kind of do as you suggest, play around. But I, I, I don't want to get too engaged in that if there's a priority that, it is a priority of the board that isn't even on our list.
No, the way I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, Linda, no, no.
So I was just gonna have you refresh my memory, um, from the TBA, uh, report. I couldn't remember if, um, a community center or some such was built into that report.
They did talk about, um, I think a community center. Um, I mean, they touched on every municipal facility, so.
I'm, I'm asking this question in relationship to your question, which is, that's one need, you know, it keeps percolating up uh, in different conversations. So I, I, I did.
So in our discussion and, and all the buildings around the table, the, we focused really on, on, I think that the priority list is really driven in large part by operational considerations. Um, I, there's no doubt that there's probably a need, there's needs for many different things, but I think our, we got focused pretty heavily on what op- what current operation is the most hamstrung by their current facility. And that's what the, and then what is the second most hamstrung, and the conversation just kind of went down that path. And this re- list reflects the operational considerations. Um, but we can certainly look at the, the other, um, facilities, except the, the board has other priorities.
That was just one thing I am aware of that I keep hearing about, so.
So, here, I'll come back to what I was saying a little bit. So here we are, suppose we adopted this. Ready? Okay, great work. Let's do it. So now we're in the market for someplace to do a public service thing. But, worst case scenario, something like that doesn't come around for seven years. I don't want to wait to start doing some things on public works. So for me, the question would be, you, you identified the salt shed, let's get on with it. But is there the next phase that we can have ready that if we don't see anything happening in the next year, we start on a lower priority, but we do part A of it. And we don't do part B if the public safety shows up. But if, again, if it doesn't show up, when it's time for annual town meeting budget appropriations, let's do.
So is some of that already integrated with the five-year capital pl- plan? I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. No?
No, no.
I, I don't know if, I, I haven't seen, quite frankly, I haven't seen the ca- the updated capital plans. I don't know if, if a salt shed's gonna be on the list from CPW, but.
I doubt it.
So one, one of the next steps, and I should have said this in the report, I apologize, is we're going to potentially continue to retain TBA to then take a look at the specific priorities and start doing much more detailed, um, design work and cost estimating. So we can start answering more specific questions versus going with, um, you know, back of the envelope numbers that we have from them now. Again, we just, we just, it, you saw the report, it's voluminous. We wanted to take it from way out here and bring it down to here where we could manage it, just in the short term. I think we'll be going back to that report over the, over the coming years as, you know, conditions in different buildings change or operational things change. We just wanted to report back to the board. Out of all that information, what is the most important to the departments, the SMT, as we sit here right now operationally? And, um, like I said, it's not acceptance more of, uh, yeah, we think that that makes sense. Keep, keep pushing, get more information. And I, and I think, I, I hear you on that and I think we, we have, um, a few, um, like I said, behind the scenes, next steps with the, working with TBA more closely, doing some of the, the variable debt projections and then working towards a, a plan of how would we go about, um, finding a site? Are, is there anything out there now? Are there municipally owned sites that would be suitable? Are there sites that could be, that are on the market? Are there, will we be contemplating a potential owner domain situation if nothing materialized? But I, I do know that something needs to probably happen on that in the coming years.
This is a great first step because I think it lays out of all the things the town could do, which was what TBA showed us all, everything, how you'd like to move through it in priorities. So I think now it's just.
Yeah, I agree. I think, um, the two things that are gonna be crucial are finding the site for public safety and the debt service. I think, um, I think Kerry has put together pretty much the debt service plan, but maybe we need now to overlay at that timeframe you're talking about twenty-five and twenty-nine. Because when I'm remem- I hope I'm remembering it wrong, but I'm remembering that if you add in the middle school, um, you're not gonna fit anything else in, in twenty-five, twenty-nine, or I don't know how long. So I guess, I think that's a really important first step that we see, uh, what the numbers really are. Um, because we're probably talking about overrides, right, and how many are we gonna be able to pass? So, um.
Well, I, and I would, you, you're completely right, Terry, and I would think that, um, like I said, the middle school building committee has a timeline to, to get to the voters, I think in the next eighteen months or so. We're still well beyond that.
Right.
Um, before we would even come back to the town meeting with a, with that exclusion vote for a public safety complex. I think, just, I mean, it is the most important thing, but to manage expectations, we would, I, I mean, I wouldn't see that coming before the voters, um, for a couple of years anyway, unless something fell out of the sky that was really perfect and we may, would maybe make that argument. But we understand the debt service impacts of the middle school and, and like I said, we're just trying to make, make a responsible, um, recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, but just, as you just said, that something falling out of the sky. I mean, the way property works, that's liable to be the way it happens. All of a sudden,
Yeah.
somebody's good, we're gonna hear about five acres someplace or somebody wants to.
Well, I think it's, i- if, depending on the cost or something like that, it may be a separate ask for site acquisition. And then continue planning and then hold off on the debt exclusion for construction until someone says. Like I said, everyone, uh, and I give the SMT credit for this, everyone was clear-eyed on what the expectation was and what, what the external factors are that we need to be mindful of. It wasn't like a, we're only thinking about our own operations.
Well, thank you very much for doing that, getting your arms around the complexity of that for the municipal facilities is, uh, so we'll look forward to more data and more updates and thank you very much.
Yeah, I wanted to echo that because I, that was such an enormous amount of data that they presented. And this is really very helpful for you to have met with your team and.
I need things in small bites to really understand them, so that's why, it helps me too.
Thanks.
Right, the, uh, next.
And if I could make one more comment, because I see, um, in the audience, people are smiling and I'm wondering if they're thinking about, um, maybe things won't fall out of the sky. We have two possible things. Um, we might have a surplus, uh, PBD school and we might have, uh, two-two-two-nine Main Street. We have, the, the location might not be right, but we have some possibilities out there. The question is, are they right? Can we afford them and, and all that kind of stuff?
Right, thank you. I think two-two-two-nine Main Street is a little out there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
All right, uh, next item on our agenda is to talk about the, um, uh, community preservation request into town. Steve, how would you like to proceed? Do we have a memorandum from Marsha Rasmussen to, uh, Steve, which he has passed on to us, which lays out, uh, town things? And in our packet, we had a note from the town manager with the town manager's priorities.
So in the, if, if I may, um, the first document in the series, the cover sheet, if you will, is a, a memo from Kate Hodges and I, um, about, when we discuss CPA projects, the board requested that, that we rank them, that the town, that the, that the, the town departments rank the priorities and then give the board the opportunity to rank your own. Um, so we did it again. You have a, an email, or sorry, a memo from Marsha Rasmussen that actually was submitted. She had submitted an original, um, set of projects, but then I think significantly, um, amended it based on some conversations with CPA. So that is, that new memo is the one that was in your packet. You still have the memo from Rich Rain regarding Emerson Field. And then there was a new project that materialized very late in the week based on, um, some work that Kate was doing with our engineer, Weston Sampson for, uh, White's Pond. And so that's also on the list. So there are seven projects, uh, in total. Uh, they are, that is our rank, our, our ranking. And then we left a, um, column for the board to, um, move it around if we want. I mean, some of them, um, there are two, actually, there are, uh, yeah, there are two that are kind of ongoing. And so those are items five and six. The regional housing service office is, is a kind of an annually recurring twenty thousand dollar contribution. The regional housing service office is, is a kind of an annually recurring twenty thousand dollar contribution. And the community preservation administrative funds is a ongoing forty thousand. I wrestled with whether or not to include that in the priority list, but since, since it is something that we rely on every year, I felt like how could I not include that on the priority list? So, um, there you have it. So I'll, I'll leave it to you.
Thoughts?
Um, thank you for, um, giving us this prioritization. The one that I'm wondering about where to put is the, um, what you have for number two is the dredging of Warner Pond. I, I fully agree that we should be developing the land around there for park, concerts, whatever. Uh, Marcia, I identified a couple of things. But we started that whole Warner's Pond project before White Pond became available. And I'm wondering if we should wait another year on that, because I'm, I'm just not sure how many years it will take to dredge the pond that hasn't been swum in for quite some time. And, and having White Pond, do we need another swimming area?
Uh, it's, okay, uh, so I think, um, I, I think Juro, um, offers a, um, in some ways, a, a bigger, uh, in some ways more accessible swimming area than Juro does.
Hmm.
And so I think they are, um, similar, but, but different. Uh, and I think my understanding is that it's about the, it's in part about the ecological health of, of the Warner Pond at Juro as much as it is anything else. It's got, um, it's, it's been the, uh, the receiver, if you will, of the stormwater management along that, along that route to, that section of Route Two. So a lot of sediment has built up, uh, and so that, that's why this was such a high priority.
My, my recollection, uh, I'd like to do is, or could I, my recollection is the dredging was on the agenda and we were doing some work before Juro.
Yes, yes.
So.
Okay, so it precedes that.
Related as a Juro Park activity.
Right.
Oh, well, okay.
Good evening. Good evening, uh, Delia K, Natural Resources Director. And, um, excuse me, they, they, the, the dredging project has been something that was identified since two thousand and twelve. Um, and as Stephen mentioned, it is really tied to the ecological health as well as the recreational opportunities of the pond, which anybody who looks at the pond in the summer, it is completely impassable for paddlers and the water is warming. Um, so we looked at that, um, limited dredging, really targeted to the, the, the boat launch off Commonwealth Avenue and going up, you know, the, um, sort of left side of Scout Island as you're looking at the access um, as a way to improve the, the flow through the pond. And the Juro acquisition was sort of a late, you know, in the game. But, you know, we, we think there's some value to including that portion of dredging. It's actually just a fraction of the, um, of the costs because of the mobilization costs for dredging overall. So, you know, ranges, let's say it's two million in, in a total cost. Um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the dredging for just the Juro piece is not a huge portion of that. So we could, you know, if that's not a, a priority, that could be taken out. But I, I think I would have a little, you know, concern about doing improvements to the Juro land, bringing people to a pond that is very difficult to enjoy as a resource because of its really utrified nature.
But not even for swimming, as you indicated, but just sort of kayaking or canoeing.
Right, exactly.
Just.
So what you're saying, Delia, is not that we put five hundred thousand in the bank for four years and then do the whole project? You're actually able to dredge part of the pond with, if, with this money?
So the two million dollar cost is for a limited dredging, which is about six acres of the pond.
Right.
And that is the total project cost. It cannot, it can't be a phased project. Uh, so the five hundred thousand dollars is a request that we deferred from last year because of other competing priorities. And so that would be the beginning of a placeholder.
Oh.
Um, we would also seek capital funding for a portion of the, um, of the dredging.
So you wouldn't be able to start the project un, until you, you can't do a piecemeal?
It, it wa, no, and it would not be something that would be started next year. It would be a couple of years out. So this is really, we had hoped to start banking the funds last year.
Right.
So this is really an effort to get that money starting to build up so that we can just do the dredging, which, you know, is, you know, a several month, but, you know, it's not, it, it, once it's underway, it will be completed in, you know, a couple of months.
So the anticipation is that there'll be another asked from CPA next year for another, another, some from the town and some from the CPA to get to your two million dollar goal?
Right, right.
Well, thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
You're welcome.
And, um, how much do we have available in CPA this year? Do, do we know approximately?
Kerr?
I knew somebody would ask. We have not provided an estimate. We've promised to do that early in October. Um, we have to go through a process of making sure that our records tie with the Department of Revenue. We don't usually issue an estimate until they've signed off. But I, I would assume, you know, between one point five and two million dollars is what we would be looking at.
Well, I was hoping you would say that because if I add up these six projects, it, we might be able to do all of them, um, possibly.
Uh, that's not the whole list.
I think perhaps there may be other CPA.
Yeah, I know.
Those numbers I do have, uh, there were a total of, um, thirteen applications for two point six million dollars.
Ah.
That's pretty tip, that's pretty, well, you were chair, that's pretty typical, right?
I knew it wasn't going to be that easy, okay.
So any, uh, comments or, on this priority set? Is there any movement, um, that we want to make? I could ask you, is the Emerson Field, uh, improvement, can it be phased? I mean, is, do, do you?
I think anything could, I, I shouldn't say anything, it, it could be phased, but I think with field projects, um, you, you, it's, there's a diminishing return on the phasing. And I think Rich has been, um, has been getting some appropriations and, and, and kind of grabbing from different sources for this. And so I think we're, he's pretty close to having it fully funded. Uh, but when you're doing fields and amenities like that, it's, if you close off half, you, you really are disrupting everybody and it takes twice as long to do the project. So I think those projects, those projects are better served going all at once.
Okay, other comments or questions? Does anybody propose that we change the ordering of these?
No, not after.
All right, then, um, I, what I would, um, what I would request is, uh, I don't know if we have an endowment, but a motion from you authorizing the chair to write, uh, to the CPC indicating, uh, the select board's priorities in terms of town, uh, proposals.
What we didn't talk about is, before we do that, what we didn't talk about, or is Rich Rain's, um, oh, yeah, the Emerson Field, that's his project, yeah, okay, good. So, um, so move on.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, I will do that.
I did have a question, but it's not about that list. It's about some of the ones, uh, one of the projects that are going to be delayed. And it was about the Chamberlain Bridge. And my recollection from a long time ago, so it's probably not crystal clear, is that there's a fair, fairly substantial trust for that, for Chamberlain Park. Is that right? And that, um.
Yes. I'm looking in Delia's general direction.
That's correct. And is there a reason why that couldn't fund it or?
Come on up.
I'm so glad they're here because I really don't know.
You're not expected to, till next week.
Yeah, right.
So when the, when the, um, Chamberlain Park, uh, was gifted to the town, it was set up with an endowment, which is overseen by the trustees of town donations, which, um, Kerry is the liaison staff, uh, person to. Um, Kerry would have a better sense of how much of that funding, how much funding there is. But I think last time we had a conversation, it was well in excess of two hundred thousand.
Oh, okay, so I, that's a different, okay.
It is, there is a significant amount of money that is available for Chamberl, Chamberlain Park. The issue really is, um, what the money was set aside for. And there's been a little bit of a difference of opinion about what that money could be used for. And I think that's, that's really the sticking point.
Hmm.
And unfortunately, we have not been able to locate the original trust documents. We've been searching for the Chamberlain Park trust documents and others. And we know we have them, we just don't know exactly where they are. Uh, a, a, and so that really, we really need to have those, or the trustees need to have those before they could sign off on anything other than what they have been funding, you know, over the years, which is just the, the general maintenance.
So perhaps, because this is on a delayed list, next year we'll have more information.
That's the goal, yes.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, one more quick question then. I see, um, the number six, the affordable house on a portion of the Juro land, that we are going to be getting an application for that, but it's going to be coming from the Concord Housing Authority instead? Okay. Okay.
Okay, committee liaison reports, Susan.
Okay. Um, I just want to add one thing to my co, comments about the porch fest. And that is that it was the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee who organized that. So thanks to all of them, because I'm, I know they put a lot of work into it. Okay, on September sixteenth, I went to the Historical Commission. They're, one of their main focus items this year is to, um, perhaps amend the demolition delay bylaw. And the point they're at now is that the, each of the committee members has gathered information of other towns and trying to see what sounds like it might be better for us or. So that it's, it's an information gathering and evaluation, um, stage of that project. Um, there, uh, in May, they're going to have the, present the, what is it? The Historic Preservation Awards. And the, they're trying to elevate the visibility of it. And, um, so they're going to have a reception at Tricon Church and, um, anyway, they're, so they're putting work into that. Uh, First Parish did present to, about a CPC project that they've identified. It's actually a town project, but, uh, Holly Kratzly came as the representative from First Parish. It's the steep, well, the, what, what's the other word for steeple that's not religious? The clock tower and the, at the top has historically been town-supported, including up until they did their most recent renovation, there was a separate electrical, uh, account for that, for the, for the clock and the bell tower. So they are going to be requesting funds to restore that. It's part of the, the, they're going to be doing a lot of restoration that they're not asked, that is strictly the church building. And it's all, and we're going to hear a lot about this going forward, of projects like this, because it's in preparation for twenty twenty-five. That's where, where they're starting with this. Um, so they asked the, um, Historical Commission for a letter of support, which they agreed to do.
Is this a, is this a CP, CPC grant they're looking for or?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And they're doing fundraiser, they're coming up with other sources of funding because we know that CPC doesn't like granting a hundred percent. Um, they're still looking for an associate member, so anyone interested, please hand in a green card. Um, and that's about it for them, but they're really busy. They're working very hard, like everyone else. I went to the Hanscom, my first Hanscom Field Advisory Committee meeting because there was some confusion about coverage and it conflicts with some other meetings. But it was interesting, they talked about noise. They talked about, there's a whole report they do every month about, um, noise and about capital projects and what's going on. And there, it was a very good representation of citizens in the, in the, uh, audience who, um, had questions. So that was interesting. Concord Middle School Building Committee, how about that committee? That was on the nineteenth. There was so much work done in the hour and forty-five minutes or whatever it was that we were there. Um, the bulk of it was around going over the, uh, request for professional services proposal. And there, the next part is project charter. We didn't get to it, but we'll work on that. So we're meeting, the committee's meeting, so everyone knows, every two weeks in the Conference Room Four at the Ripley Building. It's on a Thursday at seven thirty. Our last meeting was the nineteenth, so two weeks from then. Also, the subcommittees of that group, uh, will mostly be me, meeting on the other Thursday mornings. Um, there's finance, there's design, there's communication. So they're, they're really working hard. And the, the consultant did present two possible timelines and maybe a third, there may be a third based on discussion. But it was, they're very present and very interactive, the, um, the O P M firm. So going well.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yes.
Could I, I just want to follow up on something Susan said. Um, one, one thing is, the meetings are recorded and, um, posted for, uh, on the PEG network.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was a.
Glitch.
Miscommunication about the location of the meetings, which were, were at one point here. But we moved over Ripley mostly because of space. Um, and so the other morning, the PEG, um, they did get there, they rushed over, God bless them. And, uh, they, but the beginning, the front end of the meeting isn't on the recording. So if anybody has any questions about what happened, they can contact anybody on the committee. Uh, the other thing is, we did send those two CPA applications that are not town applications, one of the ones you just mentioned, the First Church. We refer those to council, I think, as everyone's aware, there was the act and decision. Uh, that is, um, that is really kind of casting the light on the, on the anti-aid amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you know, one of the, and I've, I've obviously been through this a couple of different times. But the, um, you know, it's, well, the town supported us in the past. And the question then rhetorically is, should the town have been doing that in light of the act and decision? So, um, I mean, hopefully so. Uh, but, um, we did refer those to council for, for review, which I think is, I'm told is a pretty standard practice. But I think we want to make sure our bases are covered, because we don't want to let CPA make a decision that wouldn't hold up.
Right, right.
Thank you, Linda.
Um, Mike and I attended the ribbon cutting for the Emerson Umbrella, uh, opening. And it was a beautiful morning and that, um, they've, they certainly have a lot to be proud of in terms of how beautiful that building is and used by so many different people in town. Um, following that, uh, again, Mike and I were at the Ag Day event, as Stephen was as well. Um, and, um, it, I think it was a good morning. Uh, we did get rained out a little early, uh, but, uh, that didn't seem to dampen people's experience prior to the rain coming. Um, Mike may want to say more about that. Um, I attended both, uh, in the same week, the Planning Board meeting and the ZBA meeting. One went to eleven o'clock at night, the next one went to eleven thirty at night. So that was quite a week. Um, clearly there was, um, incredible turnout for both the library project and the four-thirty Bedford Road project, uh, the culinary, um, homes, um, subdivision. And, um, as Stephen mentioned earlier, the library project has gone ahead. Um, and, uh, both through the Planning Board and the ZBA with conditions. And, uh, the four-thirty project will be, uh, again, on the ZBA, um, agenda because there were, uh, the Planning Board had not finished their report of recommendations for the ZBA. The other item, uh, I think that, um, was mentioned at the Planning Board again, was that they, they had received a successful grant for the forty R overlay district for the Concord Depot area, getting a consultant to help with that project. And, um, that's going to, um, I, I think they're hopeful to make some real headway on that this year, so, okay.
Thank you, Jerry.
Uh, yes, I was also, um, at the Ag Day and the umbrella ribbon cutting and, um, both were excellent events. And, um, And I was at the Public Works meeting, where they did the public hearing for the complete streets. And all of you have copies, they had extra copies, it was really well done, they had a lot of input. So, there's three tiers. The first tier, the Select Board adopted the policy for complete streets, maybe a year ago. This is Tier Two, to prioritize the streets. So, that is now ready, and it has been sent to the state. And if, as soon as it's approved, will be eligible for Tier Three, to apply for up to $400,000 a year in grants, starting this fall. So, they may be asking the Select Board for support, to write to our legislators, et cetera. Because quite a lot of these, if you look on it, a lot of these projects are going to be funded through this state project.
And who limit, my ignorance, I'm sorry, but who is it that decides what projects are sent off for potential funding?
Right, so, I thought you were going to ask me, where are they sent? They're sent to DOT, whichever, okay, right. So, the prioritization is, the first priority is Hubbard Street, the second one's Sudbury Road.
The question is, who sets these priorities?
Well, the Public Works set them in conjunction with all these input sessions that they got from the public and from the online, there was an online software, where people could actually type in. And so, they looked at all of those priorities, and they set them based on that.
Let me ask the question differently, is, are these priorities going to come to the town manager? Are they going to come to the board? I would, I would think there would be stronger applications if they came through the town manager and the Select Board.
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Have they been, I know that they just finished the prioritization process, I don't think they've applied for any of that.
No, their way, first, the state is, the DOT is going to approve this, then they fill out their grant proposal for, you know, number one, two, and three, or whatever the first year is. And I don't know the exact process, but I'm sure Stephen will be involved, if not us also.
No, I think this is a good, I would encourage the board to put this on a future agenda, and I can ask Rich to come and present and kind of go through the priority list. I mean, most of that stuff is data-driven.
Yep.
But I think it's, the board should certainly ask questions, you know, certainly...
Well, maybe you could just take the lead for us in asking Rich when he thinks it would be a good idea to come talk to us. I mean, he'll know the best timing probably for this. I'm sorry.
No, that, that sounds great. And also, they have a Public Works consultant report on the water capacity and resiliency. And there's a very strong recommendation that we need to retain as many sources and as much flexibility as possible going forward. The work is proceeding well on the Cambridge Turnpike, and the drop-off, swap-off day is October 19th. Okay, and then I went to, yeah, I went to the Council on Aging meeting, and the flu clinic for ages 60-plus will be Tuesday, October 8th, from 9:30 to 11:30. And I also attended the library meeting, where they talked about, as Linda said, getting through the Planning Board and the zoning board after the HDC. They are working very hard on their visioning process for the long-range plan for the library. You will be seeing, if you go in the library, these little one-minute surveys, and also an online tool. They're trying to get more of the sense of what people want the library to look like, you know, 20 years from now. Okay, and then I went to the Concord Center Cultural District Commission, and we're happy to report that our tourism manager, who's just started, Beth Williams, is already making a difference. They are really feeling, for example, Jane Obagi from the Chamber of Commerce, she remarked that questions from tourists used to be, how do I do a walking tour around Concord? And now, in the last few months, instead, they're saying, if I have a half a day or a whole day in Concord, what should I do? So, it's already changing even what people are calling about. They're hoping to expand the Concord Center Cultural District up to the museum. When they first looked at it, there was all that construction going on. They're going to be able to take another look. Some people wanted to expand also out to the old man's and the bridge and everything, but the walkability just isn't there right now. So, they don't think it can yet be approved, but maybe in the future. The Little Women movie is due to be released around Christmas Day, and so Beth is planning all these events in the center to coincide with that. And Jerry and some of the folks are putting together a film festival that would involve the high school, the elementary schools, the library, the umbrella, 51 Walden, would be like a great big event that they're going to be planning. And one of the questions that came up was, and this has come up before, can non-residents be members of these committees? For example, the director of the museum? So, this is, I know, an ongoing question.
Well, I've got something to say about that.
Oh, good.
In just a couple minutes.
All right, good. Okay. And then I went to the Board of Assessors, and their tentative date for the tax classification hearing, where they'll be coming in, is, I guess, November 18th?
I took that right.
Okay, and finally, I went to the, Jane was away and asked me to go to the, I don't know what this is called, it's a multi-town group, Gas Leaks Initiative meeting. And it's being coordinated by MAPC. It was at the Arlington Town Hall, there's about 30 towns involved, and they have finally, after working for six months, really hard on this, well, they have a report that's just come out, Gas Leak Allies Rolling the Dice, really excellent report. And there will be a meeting October 15th with the President of National Grid. So, this is a real accomplishment that we're getting this meeting. Yes. And the question came up, what can people do if they smell gas? Call 911, very important. People need to have much more awareness of the risks and what to do. Okay, that's it. Busy week.
Right.
Could I just ask, where, if you went on a website for MAPC, you could get that report?
Right, right. Okay, so what that, it is www.gasleaksallies.org.
Okay.
Gasleaksallies.org.
Great, thank you.
I think mother's out front also.
Yes, yeah.
So, I attended, I don't need to report anything else, Tax Fairness Meeting, you heard from Mr. Carr, the U-Cargo Trust Committee, they had a mostly administrative meeting and then went into executive session to do their business. I attended the School Committee, they had a full agenda, but I think from our perspective, I'd already reported that they had the folks from the 2229 Follow-Up Committee come present to them, and I want to get them in here to talk to us as soon as we can. I attended the Municipal Light Plant Meeting, again, a very full agenda, but from what I think is interesting to us, you may recall that when the Financial Audit Advisory Committee did its audit of the light plant a couple of years ago, the Financial Audit Committee raised concerns, and concerns is not the right word, raised the issue of whether or not the policies the light plant had for its reserves was well-articulated, how come there's this much and that? And so, they presented a draft report of all of their reserve holdings and a statement about why they were there. It was a draft, it's going to be updated and all of that, but I thought it was a really good first step for them to sort of do that.
Is that online, on the website or anywhere?
I bet not yet.
Okay.
I think it really was a sort of draft, they were just saying, hey, we're doing this, but not ready for prime time yet.
I'm sure the annual audit has the statement of reserves.
Well, it has a statement, it's not, it wasn't a mystery what the reserves were. The question was, why is the reserve this much?
Yeah.
As opposed to that much or this much?
Right.
For example, the town has a sort of policy statement of our free cash should be between 5% and 10% of the budget. So, the question is, well, what is your policy statement from your reserves? So, coming along. I attended the Financial Audit Advisory Committee meeting, where we in fact got the auditor's report for the municipal light plant. It was a clean report, no concerns whatsoever. So, on behalf of the Audit Committee, I'll be drafting a letter to both the Select Board and the Light Plant Board, laying out what the Audit Committee saw as concerns for, for the light plant to be attending to. And finally, I hosted the Chairs Breakfast on Wednesday, always a very interesting meeting. But what I wanted to report from that is, I was able to announce that our annual educational program, that I think I mentioned at our last Selects meeting, I had told you I thought it was going to be certain dates, we'll scratch those, it's going to be November 2nd, here in the townhouse. It'll begin at nine, refreshments at nine, and program will begin at 9:30 and will be done by noon for sure. It's going to have three main components. The first, by the town clerk on open meeting law and public records law, I really encourage all committee members to come to this. Open meeting law is something that needs for all of us continuing attention, especially for a small town like this, where everybody knows everybody and the like, so it's very important. The second will be hopefully conducted by the town moderator, and that will be a session on town meeting. But the session is aimed at committees, and so, if you're on the XYZ Committee, what is your responsibility vis-à-vis town meeting? Warrants, reviewing warrants, approval, that kind of stuff. And then, third, I'll be conducting a session on meeting management, and then ending with the discussion of just raising issues that people have on their mind about meetings. I think we've done this now for five years in a row, it's, I think, always been an enjoyable morning, and I always learn something at it, so I really encourage committee members to try to attend.
And it's here, in this room?
It's going to be, no, it's going to be in the hearing room. Miscellaneous correspondence, one, as I mentioned to Terry, on a number of committees that have come up that we have, we have seated, there have been the question, question raised, two major questions. Can somebody serve on two committees? And the second question is, can people who are not registered voters in the town of Concord serve on committees? So, we have an Administrative Policy, Administrative Policy 10, I think I have it correct, that lays out these conditions. But in my reading of it, it is, it's not vague, but it has words like "should" in it, as opposed to "you must," or you, you know, this kind of stuff. So, I think that in a subsequent Select Board meeting, I'll work with the town manager to sort of review it and come back with a tightened-up one, so that we can answer these questions a little bit more definitively. People do serve on committees when they are not residents of the town, but traditionally only when, we don't have somebody in the town to fill a particular function on a committee. And the same with having people serve on two committees. We don't do that unless there's just a particular skill that we need, and Terry's already on a committee. There are exceptions to that. If the charge of the, of a committee specifies something, for example, I'm the Chair of the Financial Audit Advisory Committee, and its charter says the member of the Select Board shall chair the Financial Audit Advisory Committee, so I can serve on two committees. The most recent Economic Vitality Committee says the representative of the Chamber of Commerce, all right? So, Jane does not live in Concord, but it's not Jane as a person, it's the Director of the Chamber of Commerce, so she can do it.
Right.
But I think that we should review this policy and either tighten it up or articulate the exceptions.
Right, I think that's great. I think at these cultural councils, a similar question came up, as did when we were doing the Economic Vitality Committee. We wanted that representation of the businesses and nonprofits, so...
We do.
Okay, good.
I think it's in statute, it's in MGL, but only, only members of the Finance Committee cannot serve.
Sure, that's right. That's by state.
That's by state statute. So, that one is for sure. If you're on the FinCom, you can't serve anything else, but I think the others are...
And you know, there's committees, and then there's committees. I mean, you know, there's committees that are going to last for three months, and then there's, you know, standing regulatory committees, you know? So, I think we could just review the policy and see if we can make some progress on that. Committee nominations.
I nominate Joan Abigail of the Concord Chamber of Commerce to the Economic Vitality Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2022. Holly Darzen of 155 Heathbridge Road to the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee for a term to expire March 23, 2020.
A few committee appointments.
I'm going to appoint Keith Bergman of 56 White Avenue, Linda Miller of 300 Main Street, Leah Smith of 1836 Main Street, and James B. Terry Jr. of 368 College Road to the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee for terms to expire March 30, 23, 2020.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Public comments. Ms. Proctor?
Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. And this is a league, a league observation that I'd like to offer. There are several times when the various committees, particularly around issues like 430 Bedford Road, or the Library Committee have gathered, the library expansion issues, in which the room has been so filled, that people have come and sometimes just left because they couldn't find a space. So, I would ask us to consider, when we anticipate a bigger gathering like that, to think about moving those meetings to a space that will accommodate a larger public audience, because it discouraged, I know many people who were discouraged and felt that their voices could not be readily and easily heard. So, it's simply, it's just a small recommendation, and we cannot always anticipate, I think, I suspect, you know, where big gatherings will take place.
That's fine, thank you. I'll work with Chris or Jeremy, and we can get a note out to all the committee chairs sort of reminding of that. You know, there's only a few places, and, you know, unless we go to the schools, there's only a few places that can really accommodate more than a few dozen folks, and, but it's a good point, good reminder, so thank you. All right. Seeing no more comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.